Call it to order, it's, uh, what? 7:04.
Right.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, folks?
The non-renewal of teacher.
Yep. That's not, that's no longer on the agenda under new business. Okay. That's it? Great. Welcome to all you members of the public. Usually, we give you a chance to speak now and bring whatever issues you have to us. If all of you are here for the discussion about the reduction in force, I'd ask you to wait until after the board has actually heard the proposal to hear from you, because we haven't heard it yet. We've just heard about it. We know it's coming. So, is there anybody who's here to speak about something other than that matter? All right. Great.
Johanna.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. I was sort of half doing this. Yeah, should I?
She has something under leave request.
Yeah, I'm here, um, well, I'm here because I'm presenting a letter to you with a different request.
Oh.
It's on the agenda.
But it's on the agenda.
Okay. All right, you're on the agenda in a little bit.
Great.
So you were the only one? No one else was? Half? Okay. Good. Thank you. Um, under correspondence, I know I forwarded to all the board members, um, letters that we have received. Three of them, one from Kim Friedman, one from Bruce Rossow, and one from Susan Gunther Moore. All of those come under the discussion regarding reduction in force. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at those? Does anyone need a copy? Okay.
Sorry, what was the name after Kim Friedman?
After Kim Friedman?
Yeah.
Uh, Bruce Rossow. R-O-S-O-W. All right, so first up under new business is the leave request, so you have a letter for it?
I do. I have two.
All right. You're welcome.
So we have two leave requests. One of which you've seen a version of before when we were talking about sabbaticals earlier in the budget season. From Rents. And that has been, uh, yeah, that's the shorter two of the two. And he is proposing a one-year leave of absence to go teach an international school in China. And if you remember back when we discussed that, the sabbatical stage, we declined sabbatical requests and suggested they return with a leave of absence request. So this is his request to do that.
So, do you have a recommendation about that request?
I recommend that we accept it.
Okay.
Ooh, which one?
Rents. I don't know if that's part of...
Oh, right, so there's one element of this that isn't part of the contract. There's a second-to-last paragraph where he's requesting a step in salary when he returns. My understanding of how that works is that the superintendent will make a determination to place him or not place him a step, but it's not, it's not contractually part of a leave of absence.
Correct. Under our current contract, which ends on June 30th, that is not part of it.
Okay.
So, um, we can work under the current agreement and we can have a leave of absence, but that particular thing is not in here. And we don't have a new contract for when that person would come back from the leave of absence. So we can't add that without waiting until a new contract comes in, seeing what that contract has, and then making a determination. Under our current...
So to give, so to give him what he needs to plan and what Bob needs to plan, we would, we would move, you know, grant him the leave of absence request, but take the step in salary would be at the discretion of the superintendent under the new contract? That would be a motion that we could make and we'd be...
I, I would just accept it without, without the two things. Because we don't know what the new contract will be.
What are the two things?
Without the one thing, the step.
Yes, in paragraph three?
Right.
That last, the second sentence?
Right, so we would just grant the leave of absence without the step?
Yes.
Okay. You need that as a motion?
Uh, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the leave of absence for Rents Recormoso. Recormoso? Um, for a year without the step? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions?
Without what?
Uh, without the step in salary. Okay. Want to speak to the second one?
Yeah, the second request is from Johanna Laskowski-Duke, who is here with us this evening. She has applied for and been offered a position in the building as an instructional coach for next year. That position is funded through title money, which you may have heard. There's some unsettling right now around title funding. And so, I believe it is her request that she be allowed to take a year leave from her science teaching position in the middle school to do this instructional coaching position, with the understanding that if funding didn't work out after that year, then that she would be able to return back to her science position.
And your recommendation is?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we're allowing people to leave to teach in China, we should allow people to leave who are staying in the building and helping us.
Okay. Makes sense to me, I just wanted to have it from...
Yep, I think, I mean, the challenge that it presents, that both these present is that these are positions that are sometimes tricky to fill because of the nature of what they're teaching. But, you know, we have the ability to increase capacity with our own people. So, it seems like the right thing to do.
So, is Johanna still going to be working with middle school students?
Well, she'll be an instructional coach and we'll get, if all works out well with funding, we're going to have two instructional coach positions. One that is more leaning towards the high school side and one more towards the middle school side.
And they're not both filled right now?
They're not both filled. The high school one, we've not, we've not found it out at this point for that. So right now, she would be the middle school one, but if things shape out or funding changes, she could be the one. We just don't know how that's going to play out at this point. But, we're hoping that Midland will have enough to cover the wall.
Do you feel like having two short-term or a new math, or one-year math and one-year middle school? How's that going to affect middle school? One-year math and one-year science?
Well, the math is in the high school.
Oh, Mr. Rico's in high school?
Yeah, so we're restructuring the middle school next year, and so he's actually going to be, would be entirely high school. So it's a high school math, middle school science.
I need...
Is this request compared to Rico's in terms of pay, health, and step increase?
So, if you look on paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, sentence, starting with sentence 2, it's the same thing that would not be allowed under the contract under 11.14. I think it might be a moot point because if Johanna is the coach, then all those things would occur. And I don't think under the contract that you guys can do that.
Okay.
A leave of absence for up to one year may be granted by the board upon written request of a teacher. There will be no step movement on the salary schedule for this year. Seniority, sick leave, and other contractual benefits do not occur during this year, so you guys can't do that.
Okay. So, it would be the same thing to, to approve the, approve without that language? And that would be it, right?
Approve a leave of absence based on what the master contract allows?
That's the, yeah, exactly. 11.14. And again, I think it'll be a moot point. I think Johanna will have the job. It will all accrue because it'll be a normal continuation. But, that language, I don't think you guys can, contractually cannot.
Okay.
So, is Johanna seeing any diminishment in benefits? Is, are we missing a point here? There's nothing, there's no punitive response to us making this decision? Okay.
No.
No, it's that if Johanna does it for a year and she finds out that it's not going to be funded that next year, she is under the leave of absence rules, so she gets to come back and have a position. That's why we would only hire a one-year position for those two moving parts.
Gotcha. You want? Go ahead, please.
Um, so just to clarify, so at the end, excuse me.
That's good.
At the end of next year, should title funding be cut and I return to the science teaching position, do I get the next step or do I return to my current salary as of today?
So you would get a step, right?
I'll get a step to do the title job.
Right.
Yep.
And so then you would come back from a year's absence?
And you're offered a...
At that level, and you continue on?
At the level she's at today?
No.
Or where she's...
No.
At that level?
But that's because she's taking a job within our...
You'd have a year.
Good, exactly.
I, I mean, that's how I would interpret it, is that you are working another year. And everything that would happen, would happen.
This is the manner in which we accept, believe, because not only you stay in the building.
Correct.
I mean, I think we need to make a motion to approve the leave of absence.
I get the uniqueness of it.
Is the, is the contract through Leland Gray or through the supervisor?
Uh, well, it's through all the people that are part of the master agreement, of which Leland Gray is one of them and Wyndham Central is one of them. So, it does not...
It said one.
But as a coach, the contract would still be...
It doesn't distinguish between the two.
But as a coach, her contract would still be Leland Gray contract, not a Wyndham Central contract. Right?
Well, it doesn't really make a difference.
Doesn't matter.
As long as she's this whole, it doesn't make a difference to me.
We won't change any markers.
And, well, and I would just tell you, Johanna, you're covered under the, another clause in here that says that if a position goes from one of the member schools to the WCSU, everything continues. And the same thing. So yes, I would make a motion that you grant a one-year leave of absence under the terms of the master agreement.
If only you can make motions.
Yes. Encouraging.
Yes, I understand though. Okay.
I'm just out of curiosity, does it ensure the same position or just a position in that department?
Uh, the language, and maybe that's not appropriate to ask, I'm sorry, it's not...
No, it's fine.
The language under leave of absence?
11.14? 14?
It doesn't teach you English.
No, it doesn't specify.
But typically...
We want to make good decisions for students and teachers and members of our community, so... What was my motion? You're going to approve the leave of absence?
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the leave of absence, um, under the terms of the master contract.
Wow, good job. I'll second it.
All right, any discussion on that motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the leave of absence under the terms of the master agreement for Johanna Laskowski-Duke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Abstentions? All right. Motion carries. All right, next, we need to talk about the reduction in force authorization request. Bob, you want to take us through what you're asking to...
Yep, so there's two. This evening, one is due to a budget reduction, which wasn't really a reduction because it wasn't in the budget initially. And that is the .67 math position that was added for this year after the budget was approved last spring. So that position during the budget season this year, we did not include that in the budget. And there's someone in that position, therefore, we have to do a riff of that person. Of that position, to that person.
So we're asking for authorization to do a reduction in force for a .767 math position?
Okay. You want to say those separate issues?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So moved. Is there a second to that?
No, second.
Okay. Any discussion, folks?
I second.
Emily did. Questions? Discussions?
How does that affect the program?
Well, with our reorganization in the middle school, we end up with four full-time math teachers total. One in the middle school, three in the high school. So, um, by reorganizing that, creating a schedule in the way that we're doing it, by separating them, we don't, we're not going to have teachers that are going to have, we're not going to have core subject teachers that are going to have split duties between middle and high school. What that does is actually, because of the scheduling problems with having people share, it frees up teaching space for them. So we're actually getting more efficient use out of our teachers by doing it that way. So it actually doesn't have an impact. The same number of sections we teach this year, we can teach next year with that staff.
No classes are being limited or reduced as a result?
Nope. Nope.
Another question, what's the size of our math class now?
Great question. No idea off the top of my head. I can get that if you guys, next time if you want. We're also starting scheduling for next year now. The kids have started signing up for things and I can, once I have a better sense of what enrollment's going to look like and where kids are selecting, I can give you information for next year, probably by late May or June, probably as well. But I'll try to get you some information for this year.
For, are you saying you could give us that for all?
Whatever you guys want. Do you ask math or whatever you guys want?
I mean, I think that's a relevant question, but if it's, you know, when, when you're able to, to give us that, that'd be great to know that for across the school.
For this year, then for next year, when I know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else on that, on that motion? All right, all in favor of, was it approving?
Authorizing.
Authorizing the reduction in force for a .67 math teacher, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Abstentions? Y'all have it. Okay?
All right, so the second one, I just sent a paper around, which I also sent you guys this afternoon, I'm sure people didn't, think you guys have to get to it. The second one is not a budgetary riff, it's a reorganizational riff. And currently, um, well, let me walk through it. So the, the authorization we're seeking is to riff a .6 school social worker. To not replace, and then this isn't part of the riff, but the information is to not replace a counseling secretary who resigned last month, and combine those funds to hire a 1.0 school counselor, additional 1.0 school counselor for next year. So it's really a reorganization, a restructuring of some positions to end up with. As you can see down below, currently, 1.85 FTEs in the counseling department. We would end up with 2.0 FTEs with the new arrangement. So we're actually increasing the number of staff in the counseling department. Definitely looks a little bit different, but we're, we're increasing the staff and providing that at no additional cost because of the secretarial reduction as well. We don't need to riff that because there's nobody in that position. So I'm going to go through this, I'm going to come back to a, something to add on to the end when I get to the end, okay? So bear with me. So one of the, one of the challenges that we're trying to address is that, trying to get more consistent access of adults by students on a daily basis. One of the challenges of a .6 position is that they're here three days a week and not every day. Another thing that we're doing as part of this by bringing in a second counselor is that we are shifting some element of this combined counseling admin position that Mel has, shifting that to be more on the admin side of things, to basically create a full-time administrator, basically, to be that second person. And we, whatever title we use, we can discuss titles, but it basically is the same person in the same job. And that gives more focus to us administratively to be able to direct that. It's a, it's a real challenge to be, I think, a disciplinarian in being admin as well as being a counselor. And so it's been, it's been an odd marriage, I would say, from the beginning. And it's been a model that's existed here for...
Six years?
Six years. And some model that I would like to move away from, and was hoping to move away from the following year, or I was hoping to move away from this year originally, when we had the original budget, we reduced that position. So this is basically another opportunity to do, to reorganize that and create that, to be cleaner. Challenges that remain from this shift, there are, there will be gaps of service. And I think that a lot of those gaps can be filled. I think of the difference between, you know, a school counselor can do like an array of services like from here to here, and then a school social worker can do an array of services from here to here, and there's a significant amount of overlap. And so the question is like, what are you gaining with extra breadth of service here versus what are you losing from the breadth of service over here? And so, you know, my, my hope is that, that we will be able to provide a lot of that work through having this other breadth replaced over here with that second counselor. And that's, that's sort of the, the logic behind this. I think that the, the role of a school counselor has been underutilized here, and that there's more things that they can do that we haven't used them for. So that's part of my, my approach. But clearly, there's going to be, there's going to be a depth that we're not going to have for a particular section over here that the social worker can do, the school counselor cannot do, that we would be giving up. So that's, that is the gap that would remain. However, we do have additional clinicians that come in who don't work for us, that we don't, we don't pay for, who come in and basically operate in our space and meet with kids and bill their insurance or Medicaid. And we can look to add to that, we have two people that do that currently, and we can look to add to that to help fill in that gap as well. So that's sort of the, the thinking around that. So I tried to anticipate a few questions, I've had some emails in the last three, four days, so I tried to anticipate some of the questions and answered them all in one place. And the number one is like, why now? Why are we talking about this now? Budget season was months ago. This was not something that was possible without the departure of that, of that counseling secretary. So with that, with the freeing up of some funds there that allowed a discussion of this to happen with Mel and I, and to be able to come up with a plan that could move us forward a little bit quicker than we thought, had no impact on the budget. Number two, does this cost us more? Nope, it works within the confines of the already-approved budget. What's the difference between a school social worker and a school counselor? I tried to, I think I already explained a little bit about that. And I think that the...
Direct, but actually, I didn't hear any, I just heard you say, missing leaving, that'd be great as a personal audience, because I don't, if you could really clearly talk about that.
Sure, I mean, I could talk about the idea that there's similar requirements to do both jobs. Each require a master's degree, each require extensive internships, and each require licensure through the AOE. The, the gap, in my analysis, is that a school social worker can do more in-depth therapeutic counseling that a school counselor wouldn't necessarily do. And many other elements of that job can be done by a school counselor, whether it's community outreach, work with families, working with teachers, so on and so forth. So there's elements of that job that can be done by school counselors if we had ample staff to do that. And again, be able to provide that level of daily contact for kids rather than people who are here part-time. Another, another question that came up was, is this just an attempt to get assistant principal off the board, cut it from the budget? And no, it doesn't really change the administrative structure, there's still two people. It's just whenever you call them, you call them, but it doesn't really change that. We're not looking to add it. We're not, not requesting to reduce, a social worker to add, an assistant principal. It's not what we're talking about, we're talking about reducing a social worker to add a full-time counselor. So, that, just wanted to clarify that piece, so I know I had some questions about that. The question, why don't we just increase the social worker to full-time if we want someone who is here every day to meet with kids and to be that daily person? Well, my, it's my thought that the, that the array of services that you get from a school counselor is more in line with what our primary mission here is. You know, we're not a social service organization, we're a school. And so I have to believe that, that our primary mission is educating. And so having the school counselor be there to be the one who is that, rather than a school social worker, provides us that, that preparation for kids for college and career pathways and PLPs and those kinds of things, they're going to set them up for after their time at Leland and Gray. So that's, that's why the school, the school counselor provides that array of services more so than a school social worker does. It was asked to me, why are we reducing the mental health supports available to students? Well, in fact, we're not, we're increasing the overall FTE in the counseling department. Again, we're losing some depth, but we're gaining some breadth. And then again, is this a good decision for students? Which is what we all should be thinking about, what's best for the kids. And I, I contend that it is, because it provides more access to adults every day with two full-time counselors rather than, than three days a week with a social worker. It provides more systems and structures to be able to create real, meaningful personalization, create pathways to career and college. So that's sort of, that's sort of the logic behind the argument and the proposal. Now, in the meantime, while this was, was being discussed and debated, I had, I'd asked Laurie Garland at Central Office to run some numbers for me to talk, tell me a little bit about like, what, what is the actual cost difference? What, where am I going to end up on this? Because I obviously want to make sure that what I'm saying is true while not being over budget. And it turns out that after an analysis, that we're, that we're under budget more than I expected because of this reorganization. So in talking with Mel a little bit today, we, it was Mel's suggestion that we consider bringing the social worker position back at a one-day-a-week level. And I think we're going to be able to afford that. It's going to depend on a few factors, obviously, who the school counselors that we hire, and where they fall on the salary scale and all that kind of stuff. But it's possible that we could end up with enough funds for next year to be able to do a full-time counselor and have one-day-a-week social worker to provide that depth in the really hard-hitting cases that we, that we need that support for. So in that situation, we'd be going from a 1.85 to a 2.2 for the same cost. We would not be replacing the secretarial position. That's where the savings, the ability comes to do that. So we're moving money really from support to staff positions into professional staff positions. So that was the logic, and I can get into the details of how the riff would work still, because I don't know exactly what that, what those dollars will be until we actually have a hire. But it would be my suggestion that we, we still riff the position and that we have that in the mind as the plan to recall that position to a day a week once we can identify that the money is available. So that's sort of the thinking at this point. And that was a new thing this afternoon, it wasn't even in the stuff I sent you.
Question, Emily? Let you tell it.
So, the administrative position, the position that you lost and are not being hired for, can you just give us the impact of the loss of that? Because obviously, we had a position that we didn't talk about.
Which, I'm sorry, which please?
The secretary.
Oh, oh, yep.
So, but you don't, I also want to ask the second question.
Sure.
Which is more, I think, toward you, Bill. Are there services available at the Wyndham Central level that we now take advantage of or that we can expand on, use of, or that we, you know, I, I know we have a school counselor, I mean, a school psychologist? And I want to, I want to understand the difference between a guidance counselor, a school psychologist, and a social worker? So if you could sort of expand on that for all of us as well?
Well, I would just echo what Bob said, and actually, the other .4 of this position is a WCSU position that works in two other schools.
Okay.
The other .4 of this social worker position. And, you know, I would echo about the breadth and the depth and looking at it from the lens of providing the best, most consistent service we can for our students. I like the plan. I think it's a good plan.
Okay. And the secretary, that's one.
Yeah, so the secretary position, I think, is, was relatively recent we had, in the scheme of things.
It's about five years.
Five years. So that was a position that was created five years ago. Prior to that, the office functioned with, without it. So, I'm, you know, with fewer students in the building and thinking about being financially responsible and having the person leave on their own to seek another, you know, world to go live in, it seemed like a good opportunity to not replace it. The impact is going to be a little bit more work for the counselors to get passes ready to give to kids and things like that. There's some scheduling things that Mel and I now do on our own, more so than what, I think, and also, since the time she's left, because she left a little less than a month ago, the social worker and the two therapists that also come in to do their work with us also have stuff that ran through that office as well. So we have the registrars picking up that slack, or Mel's picking up that slack, and the others, the other counselors picking up that slack as well, so...
Okay. Mostly scheduling, though?
Yeah, it's a lot of scheduling, EST management, which we've found other ways to do that. Yeah. I mean, I'm not suggesting that it's easy, but I'm also suggesting that all the things, you know, whenever we talk about these kinds of things, that there are some incredibly hard decisions that are going to be coming down... hard decisions that are going to be coming down the pipe for you guys, this board. And this is maybe the first real hard one to think about. It's not going to be the last one. And, you know, we try to do the best we can to, to, you know, have like RIFs mediated by retirement buyouts and things like that, or people departing. So we're not impacting people as much when we do this. But sometimes you can't. I mean, so.
Thanks.
Kelly, you have a question? Ben, Drew, and you have it.
So just in relation to not replacing Mary or that position at all, I'd really like to say that as a parent, you guys aren't always easy to reach. And Mary was absolutely there. She really facilitated being able to contact the school as, as a person outside trying to reach the school from a very good place. So I would just caution you to make sure then, if you're going to be doing that directly, there needs to be some response there on a-
Yeah, we still have three people in the main office-
It's true.
...who are answering phones.
But she was special and you know that. And she actually, you know, so just beware that. The second thing is-
We tried to make her not leave.
As did my son. So we're all good.
I'm sure. We had a dance party in the gym floor and everything.
So Mel's quarter counselor is my map around here. So that's going to be now just purely administration. So how does that change the budget?
I mean, it doesn't really. I mean, we, I would-
Sort of does, because you're moving it to a different place. It's still, she's still-
The bottom line, it's not going to impact the bottom line. We would move money around from one line to another perhaps, but I think it's not going to impact the bottom line. Do you know what I mean? Like, she'd still be a full-time employee.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the RIF of the .6 FTE school social worker.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
There's plenty of time for discussion after the motion is made.
We should actually have a motion before the discussion.
Right.
You want the motion first?
I move that we authorize a RIF of the .5 FTE school social, I'm sorry, .6 FTE school social worker position.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right. Now, discussion. Howie, you were next up.
Well, this came across, I just saw this today. So this is pretty new information. So I can't really digest this particular issue. The issue I want to discuss with you right now is how this is coming about. We, we're going to have a lot of reductions in force over the coming years. It's really distressing to think that a secretary quitting inspires the reorganization of a department on the spur of the moment. I mean, I appreciate you trying to, to take advantage of an opportunity and make a quick, you know, shuffle around here for the benefit of the kids. And, you know, you, you deserve some applause for that. But this has a chilling effect on the whole school community because now people are wondering about their jobs. You know, if the secretary quits, is the whole department, the whole department gets reorganized and other people then lose their jobs because of that, it, it doesn't send a really good message. I mean, are we keeping a bad setup because the secretary hadn't quit? It, it, I don't like it. And, and I think we need to come up with, since we know that, that there are more staff reductions coming down the pipe, we need to put together a committee of people, you know, of, of our community. You know, we, we try and foster a feeling of community in the school where everybody's sort of part of the family. And that includes our staff members. So I think it's, I, I am not going to support this. As far as I'm concerned, I think we should, you should just rehire a secretary and form a committee to really evaluate this thing with the staff. And if it turns out this is a great idea, which it very well may be, do it with the support of the staff and give it some time to play out rather than have it, that, rather than have it done at the last minute because the secretary decided to, you know, quit her job. I'm not saying this is a bad idea. What I'm saying is, the way this is going down is bad.
So, Joe, I mean-
Sure.
So, I mean, a couple of things about that. I think, you know, we had talked at Budget Time about the secretary pool and whether or not it was too heavy to begin with. We, we tried to, you know, work around not harming people. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. But the idea of not replacing her was something that we had in our heads from last fall. Not replacing her, but, but having a smaller group of secretaries in some way. What that did is that it gave us the ability to kind of move on it sooner rather than having to wait another budget cycle or RIF someone. So that was something that was on the radar already. It wasn't a spur-of-the-moment thing. Second, I just want to make sure that we, that I, these decisions are incredibly hard. They're hard for the people involved. They're hard for us to make. They're hard for us to talk about. None of these types of decisions we approach in any way that's light. So I don't want you to have the impression that these are just like, secretary left, we're going to start RIFing people to reorganize. That's not how it goes. These things take a lot of thought and a lot of time and a lot of bouncing ideas off of and having conversation that goes on for a period of time. So don't think that I'm approaching anything with any sort of quickness or reactive type approach. It's not my style. The third thing I would say is, I appreciate your idea of, of having a community of people kind of get together to kind of assess these systems. The problem is, you're asking people to assess their colleagues in a situation that isn't, doesn't put them in a fair place. This is why you guys hired me. All right? This is why you hired Mel. You hire us to make those decisions. And we can't run all those decisions up the flagpole with staff. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to the person. It, and it's, you know, that's not, I don't think, what the community wants. My sense is that you guys are elected to hire me to may have me do those kinds of decisions. And if there's an issue of trust around me making the right decisions, that's, we can talk about that. But I don't think, you want, I don't think you want me sitting down with the whole staff to make those kinds of calls.
No. I would add that you, you didn't say this, but I would add that it's unfair to you as well to force you to try and have you run those decisions up the flagpole every time.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's governing by popular consent, popular vote. It's just not, it's just not how you want to run an institution, I don't think. So, I mean, people can, can agree or disagree with a decision being right or wrong, for sure. But I just don't want people having no faith in the process, you know?
Well, like I said, it is, you know, as much as I appreciate, and I know that you do put a lot of thought into this, when it comes out like in this manner, it doesn't appear that way to the public.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm actually very curious to hear what the public has to say. But I just would like to make one comment. We're losing depth but to gaining breadth, as you said. I'm a little concerned about the loss of breadth because it affects a very vulnerable segment of the student population. The students who actually are working with a social worker are particularly vulnerable. And this is a very important service that they're receiving. I don't know, we can't discuss names, of course. I don't even know who they are. I'm talking in the abstract here. But the kind of student who would go and work with a school social worker and who will no longer have access to that clinical trained person would be losing a lot under the new configuration without a school social worker but with two school counselors, which is why I cannot support this motion either.
I would just say that I don't think it's a removal of the breadth. It's the consistent-
They meant to say depth.
Sorry. It's the consistent FTE employment. We will never deny the necessary service to any student. But there's a difference between having an employee who has breadth and then when it rises to a level that needs depth, than having depth that may not be serving the full 300 continuous, the contingency of the students. So, I mean, it's, students are going to get what they need. It's just a different delivery model.
It's a different delivery model in the sense that if a student is flagged as needing clinical care, we would be calling on an outside consultant, on an outside service to come in and do that.
That's quite possible.
Which means it's often somebody who doesn't have the kind of close relationship and knowledge and acquaintance with the students. So I see that as a serious loss. If we were, we're not a business, but if we were a business, we'd be losing a whole line of product.
And I think the only thing I would say that is, there's, I, I guess what I'm suggesting is that there's gaps already going on this side of the spectrum that we are currently losing that we can fill as well. I just want to make sure that we understand it's not just a matter of status quo and this loss, that there's, there is going to be a little bit of loss, maybe, maybe not. We can try to fill that in different ways. But in the meantime, we're gaining a huge amount of breadth this way that we currently don't have. And I think that's an important thing we have to keep in mind. Like I said, it's not easy. And, and there's, there's a little, you know, in an ideal world with unlimited budget, we'd have both. We have, you know, in Springfield, we had the population of 420, 430. I had three full-time counselors, a full-time social worker, and two full-time nurses, sort of as a mental health team, if you will. You know, right now I have 1.85 in the entire department. If you add a nurse, I got 2.85. So, I mean, as far as ratios go, I would love it if it was a lot more. But, you know, when you, when you start thinking about, so if I'm taking away money from a support staff position, which gives the, the professional staff more work but doesn't impact kids directly per se, man, no, Mary did. And that's not what I'm trying to say. But we're trying to find creative ways to be able to do these things, to expand the services and continue to do things more creatively without having it impact kids to that degree. If the money was unlimited and we could have a full-time social worker and two full-time counselors, then that'd be great. So what program, what academic program am I going to reduce to do that? Because money isn't unlimited. So that's the challenge, is we look at the big picture of things. It's not a simple matter like, we really need this, let's just keep it. Well, there's still a gap over here that we're not hitting. So we have to figure out how we're going to hit, cover this gap from the, from the school counselor realm. And how do we fit that? How do we manage to hit that one without spending any more money? Am I laying off a math teacher? Am I not offering AP? And these, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just saying like, these are the, these are the kinds of hard decisions we're going to be looking at in the coming years. And none of them are going to be easy. And if we say that we need everything, then we're not, we're not going to be able to offer the budget that you guys are going to want us to offer. So just keep that in mind. You know, if you guys shoot down the proposal, I mean, it's, it's great. I mean, in some ways we keep her. But there's still this gap of service that I got to figure out how I'm going to fix. You know, and I'm not, and I'm not in a position that was, so that's, I just want to make sure we're clear on that point, that there's a, yes, there's things to be aware of, but we have to be aware of what we're, what we're not filling in right now.
Chloe?
Despite explanations of there being a wider array of services and this being a hard decision to make, I have to agree with Baumann when I say that I think this is, it's kind of scary to think as a graduating senior who knows that a lot of kids who have, you know, use the services of a social worker, it's kind of concerning that we're not going to have one possibly in the building at times. Because I know a lot of people who have been impacted by that. And I do understand that there will be maybe a wider array of services. But when it, it does say here that our primary mission is educating, preparing students for life after Leland and Gray. And while clearly we're a high school and that is our main purpose, kids can't, some kids just can't get that far without the help from certain people. And I think that a social worker is a person that adds a lot of benefits to our community. And I personally, as a student, am worried to see that person go, that position not be there because I know so many people who have benefited from it. I've benefited from it once or twice. And I just can't see our community without it. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that some kids just can't get by without that little bit of help. So I, as a student, am concerned to see that go as well.
There was somebody out there who wanted to speak.
Can we hear the letters? Will we get to hear the letters that came in?
Each letter is over two pages long. I'd really rather not read them aloud.
And they couldn't be here. They couldn't be here. So they wrote.
Well, one person is here. Can we just, you know what, can we just make copies of these and hand them out? Because I really don't want to read them in. They're public documents.
Is there, is there a moment for public comment?
Yeah. All you got to do is raise your hand. I'll recognize you.
I would like to.
Go ahead.
Great. I'm Amanda Bishop. I have a couple of things for you guys. I have a letter, but I promise I'm not going to read all of it. That was over two pages. I'm going to give it to Chloe. She's going to pass it around. The bits that I'm going to read are highlighted. I also have a petition for you guys, signed by a number of people who were not able to be here, but wanted to show their support for the idea that the school social worker position should be preserved. So it's recently come to my attention that the current three-fifths school social worker position at Leland and Gray is being eliminated for the 2017-18 school year and being replaced by a full-time student counselor position. This decision is a dire and dangerous mistake, both for our students and for our school community as a whole. School counselors alone cannot handle the responsibility of a school social worker. School counselors play a vital role in the functioning of a safe and healthy school, but they lack the clinical mental health training that our demographic requires in order to ensure equal access to education across the student body. Having taught at Leland and Gray for five years, I can say with confidence that my job would be impossible without the support of a trained mental health professional regularly available in the building. Suicidal students, students who have been physically and sexually abused, students who have experienced dating violence, and students who have intentionally harmed themselves or someone else have all confided in me during the course of that time, the same way that they confide in other trusted teachers in the building. Each time, I've relied on the school social worker as the most essential collaborator in addressing the concerns as they arise, particularly when the disclosures require mandated reporting to state agencies or complicated interactions with parents and guardians. Additionally, the School Social Work Association of America confirms that school settings are far and away the first line of intervention when it comes to diagnosing and treating mental illness in the community. The impact of the school social worker extends far beyond the walls of the schoolhouse itself. The SSWA reports, schools are often one of the first places where mental health issues are recognized and addressed. School social workers serve as the primary mental health providers for students and may be the only counseling professionals available to students and their families to initially identify and provide interventions for those issues. School counselors are certainly qualified to refer students to clinical practitioners, but that is a process which takes time and requires a swift parent and guardian follow-through to be effective. Considering the severity of the situations that our students face and how often they face them within their family structures, we cannot count on the fact that the necessary follow-up support will be enacted, nor can we assume that a student may safely bide his time while clinical assistance is pursued. Without a school social worker housed in our building, we will generate an environment that is less sensitive to identification of student mental health issues, creating the real possibility of graduating students into the world without providing them with the essential care that they need. The future of our students' quality of life is at stake, not just their ability to function within our school community during their tenure. According to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or the YRBS, implemented and published by the Vermont Department of Health, Leland and Gray has real cause for concern in the area of mental health. The evidence is not simply anecdotal. The most recent available results of the survey reveal the following statistics. Seventeen percent of our high school students report being bullied in the past 30 days. That's about 38 students. Fifteen percent of our high school students report being electronically bullied in the past 12 months. That's about 33 students. Sixteen percent of our high school students report hurting themselves in the past 12 months. That's about 35 students. Twenty percent of our high school students report feeling sad or hopeless for two weeks in a row in the past 12 months. That's about 44 students. Twelve percent of our high school students report creating a suicide plan in the last 12 months. That's about 26 students. Six percent of our students report attempting suicide in the past 12 months. That's about 13 students. Forty-eight percent of our high school students report feeling like they are important to the people in their community, which sounds nice until you think about the fact that this means 52 percent, or about 115 of our students, feel like they do not matter to people in their community. Furthermore, both the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union Continuous Improvement Plan and Leland and Gray's Title I Action Plan, seminal documents that lay out making, oh, Jesus, I'm sorry, that lay out-
Yeah.
That lay out missions, goals, and strategies which dictate our educational practices clearly demand the support of a school social worker in our high school. The WCSU CIP focuses heavily on the implementation of a multi-tiered system of supports, which can be understood as an evidence-based strategy used to meet the needs of diverse learners by integrating academic, emotional, and behavioral supports that address all aspects of student learning. Simply put, it is the process of addressing- Simply put, it is the process of addressing the needs of the whole student within the school setting. A vital strand in this integration of supports is the delivery of mental health services to students. WCSU stated strategies for the 2018-19 school year include raising awareness and creating trauma-informed schools, identifying and responding to student behaviors, restorative justice practices, and anti-harassment and bullying techniques. All of these strategies are unrealistic without the support of a social worker at Leland and Gray and are to help the WCSU meet the components in its long-term improvement plan. Outside contractors or collaborators in the mental health field will simply not have the context or the community presence to be effective agents of change. I understand well, as a teacher here, obviously, that Leland and Gray is in a moment of flux. There is necessary restructuring taking place at many different levels in order to create a sustainable school that can withstand declining enrollment and complicated budgetary issues. Regardless, it is the recommendation of the American School Counselor Association, the National Association of School Resource Officers, the National Association of School Psychologists, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the School Social Work Association of America, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, that even in times of budgetary stress, schools continue to prioritize offering mental health services and to integrate them with academic interventions in MTSS systems to address student needs. Each one of those organizations endorses that best practice for creating safe, safe and successful schools. I do understand that in this decision, the administration is making an attempt to increase student access to counseling by eliminating the three-fifths social worker position and hiring a full-time student counselor. But I'm a firm believer that this attempt, however well-meant, is misguided. Rather than provide more assistance and support to students in crisis, this tactical move will keep them further from the clinical mental health services that they need in order to be healthy learners, peers, and community members. As a teacher at Leland and Gray, there's no doubt in my mind that we must retain a school social worker. To eliminate the position is to immediately endanger our students, overburden our teachers and school counselors with crises outside of their expertise, to fly in the face of district and school-wide plans that we ourselves have developed, and to fight against the tide of cutting-edge educational movements which call for the integration of mental health and academic interventions for all of our students. With no disrespect to the administration and its outlined plan, I must recognize the failure of this solution to serve our students as well as they must be served by their public school. It is our responsibility to carefully consider the needs of our population and allocate our resources where they may do the most good. No school counselor is capable of the nuanced psychological work of a school social worker. It is our moral imperative to preserve this position, not just for this budget cycle, but for as long as our doors are open.
Barbara?
So I have a letter to read as well. Do you need copies before I do?
Is it from you?
It's from me. It's addressed to Bob, but I'd like you all to hear it.
Okay.
Yeah? Okay. Barbara Marchant. Where Amanda was. Dear Bob, in the beginning of the year, I lamented how overwhelming it can be to manage the library by myself. To your credit, you validated my feelings, but you said that guiding phrase that principals always say to teachers in moments of stress or difficulty. It's all about the kids. Right. I know this. In all due respect, I need to say it to you. Having Susan Gunthermore in this building is all about the kids. One of the guiding words we have heard this year is empathy. On the day I heard about the prospect of Susan losing her position, you ended the faculty meeting with the word empathy. Last month, we had a full day of professional development. It was in large part about empathy. At this moment, I ask you, where is your empathy for the kids? Several years ago, someone perhaps in the special ed department made the determination that there was a need for a social worker, because it is a different kind of student support than is offered by the counselors. Susan is not the first social worker in the position. In fact, she was hired with more qualifications at a salary that was significantly less than the social worker before her. As the association president at the time, Susan and I discussed fighting for a higher salary. In the end, Susan decided not to. She knew that she deserved at least the same compensation as the gentleman had the position. But in the end, it was not about her. It was about the kids. She did not wish to do anything that would be a distraction or diminish the work that lay ahead. Leland and Gray has suffered an extraordinary amount of loss in the last five or six years. Most recently, a year ago, we lost teacher Ann Chapman, cancer. Not only was she a highly charismatic and effective teacher, Ann personified the word empathy. Before Ann's tragic death, our students have lost classmates, friends, and family members to illness, accidents, suicide, homicide, and opiates. Grief counselor Debbie Haskins became a familiar face around here, joining the school crisis team, which includes Susan, to help the students navigate their grief. During a workshop with Ms. Haskin, I wrote in my notes, the team needs four, teens need four to five adults to talk about their grief. Susan has long been one of the empathetic and caring adults they are accustomed to going to when dealing with grief and trauma. And how can I forget to mention that during the same period of significant loss, Susan lost her husband Rob to leukemia. A loss not just for Susan, but for her two young adult daughters and their friends and families, all of whom were part of the Leland and Gray community. Sadly, this has made her an even more credible witness to the grief of our students. Another guiding phrase in education is, it's all about relationships. If this is more than just a phrase, why would it be acceptable to interrupt the relationships that Susan has built with the students in her care? They need her. She too personifies the guiding word, empathy. Her work cannot simply be taken up by someone else or an outside agency. And because her work is confidential and ongoing, its value cannot be measured easily by punching numbers into a data collection program. When students hear about this, should it come to pass, you will be witness to the effects of the addition of more grief and loss on top of the grief and loss the students already carry. That's the way grief and loss works. It builds. Susan can't make it go away, no one can, but she is our resident expert in helping students manage it so they can focus on school and be successful. Last week, a student known to Susan brought a friend with her to Susan's office. The friend was desperate and suicidal. She knew that there was help out there, but she wasn't sure who to call, and even if she did, she had no way to get to an appointment. Her parents wouldn't understand, and she didn't have a driver's license. Fortunately, Susan was willing and available to assist the student. How great was that? You may wonder how I know how skilled Susan is. I know because she's helped me to become better, more empathetic educator. Not that I really like to be reminded that I can do better, but she has a remarkable and gentle, kind way of delivering the news. Even as I try to put up a defense, pretty good attitude, she's always right on the mark. This is surely the way she is with students. Kind, gentle, patient, and empathetic. The thing is, most of us are replaceable. Susan Gunthermore is not. I am begging you and the board to commit to the position of school social worker this year and for as many years as Susan chooses to work with us, because not only is it about the kids, it's about her. She is simply an amazing clinician. You may wonder how I know this. I have a degree in social work from New York University, and I considered becoming a school counselor. I chose not to follow that path because at the time, I knew I didn't have what it takes to do the job well. And because I have personally benefited from individual counseling to understand my own grief and trauma at an early age, I believe I can speak with authority.
Go ahead, ma'am. Sure. I can't really see, all I see is hands after the front row here, so.
Hi. I had a whole letter to read, but what I've heard here tonight has stunned me. I can't believe that in 2017, a school principal would pretend that you can separate a school's purpose from a social service agency. A school is about community, and our communities are up the creek. I work as a guardian at Lydham, and I cannot believe the breadth and depth of despair in families and the lack of connection. One thing that happens in this school is not something that outside, free-to-you counselors can bring. Susan, as school social worker, runs many groups. She fosters relationships with students and teaches them how to relate to each other and other people in the world. I have been to a number of trainings on chronic trauma, which is what so many of this school's students are living with. It impacts the ability to learn massively, and I can't believe that you don't know that. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional because this is so upsetting that you would even think that you could just take out someone who fosters the health and vision of the community and who sees the health of the community as the answer to individual health. Her vision of community as, as the best hope for individuals is remarkable. It's astounding, and she, her hope in it never flags. And to just, I don't even hear anything about that in what you're saying. I don't hear anything about a healthy community. I hear something about kids who need to be seen. And it's, where have you been living? It's just shocking. So I'm sorry, I get so angry because it's infuriating.
What, what's your name?
Margaret Wimberger.
And you work here, or?
No, I'm a parent, a taxpayer, I'm, I'm a good friend of Susan's, which some of you may know.
Thank you.
And I had kids who went here.
You're absolutely great. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, there's a hand behind you, but I don't know who it is, so. Can you just introduce yourself when you speak to? I've got a sign-in sheet going around, but just for the...
My name's Marshall Glickman, I'm from Williamsville. I know Susan, is a friend and neighbor. I was also a member of the New Fane Elementary School Board for six years, and I, I want to speak on behalf of just the set of practical aspects of mental health. I'm a businessperson, I've been in business for thirty-three years. I have one of the larger employers in Rattleboro. I've probably managed hundreds of people over my career, and I can't tell you, I'm also upset because I know a special Susan. How important mental health is to being an effective employee. It's more important than intelligence, talent, anything. I have so many people that I can't give them more responsibility because they can't manage themselves or interact with others, and those are the people that get left behind. It is more important than history, it's more important than math, it's more important than anything. Sorry. It's very upsetting for me, too, because, and, you know, I talked to Ken Friedman, who's a professional in the education field, she talked to Bob. You referred to Susan as fantastic. She is fantastic. For instance, this is not a social worker position, it's a fantastic social worker. And also, I can say as an employer, when you have a fantastic employee, they're worth two or three times the people. And if Susan's got, your administrative load is going to go through the roof. And you say she's, you, you wish she was here five days a week, three is better than none. So, I have so many more things to say, and I'm just not able to speak totally clearly, but, you know, and also, but how he said about input from the community is really good. I'm not saying you have to make hiring and firing decisions by consensus, but this is something that impacts the whole community on an emotional level, and to really have an in-depth discussion for the community, you're seeing, look at the people are here. People are here because they know how valued this is and how important it is. And I'm sorry, I'm usually more articulate, but I'm just upset. The only last thing I would say is, one of the most important qualities of all is, you know, research is showing is grit. And people need to be self-confident, they need to have self-esteem, they need to be lifelong learners, and that all comes by having good mental health. So it is the number one, most important aspect of anyone going anywhere.
Now, there's a person behind you. Everybody gets to speak once before the second time.
Dan Wolke, South New Fane. There are a few different aspects of this I'd like to address. I'm a workshop teacher, and I've been here close to twenty years. And so I've, I've been able to have my little slice of Leland and Gray kids over the twenty years. And I can tell you that, that, I don't know whether it's, I'm guessing trauma's got a lot to do with it, and I'm guessing opiates. Well, actually, I know that the opiate situation has a lot to do with it also. But I can absolutely tell you without a doubt, the crisis life of our children is much, much greater than it was twenty years ago. It's vastly greater. And when, when you guys, I totally get what you're talking about, we're missing some breadth in, in what school counselors can give, and school counselors can be useful. A lot of kids will disagree with that statement, but I think they can be useful. But when you mentioned like the depth, the depth is always like, ah, a little depth, a little depth. The depth is actually more than that. What we're talking about in that little depth thing are the students who are in the most trouble, who need the most help, and have the least chance of getting that help. So you may, this plan may actually rise the boat a little higher, and it might make a greater number of students have some more services. But what you are doing is exactly the opposite of what we need to do, which is you are leaving a small, but absolute, real group of people twisting in the wind. And those are the people who are the most vulnerable and can do the least to climb out of that twist in the wind. And we cannot do that to our kids, and even if it means it costs us some money, we, we just cannot morally do that. So that's, that's one thing. I would like to say that in terms of the budget, the citizens of the sending towns went to bat for the school in a very large way. And we restored some cuts which were made, and cuts were made in good faith, they were restored in good faith, and when they were restored, there was sort of a tacit agreement. Obviously, we know that when townspeople vote in a budget, they don't lie, I don't lie. But we voted in with an agreement, and the, and the understanding was, there was give and take on all sides. And Bob Tebow gave up the vice presidentialship, gave us some teaching positions, other positions were quit back, and people said, we're going to do this, and we went out and worked hard for that vote, and it was passed two to one for the school, in support of the school. So people knew what they got, they knew what they didn't lose, and they knew what they were going to lose. Now, they're losing something which is, this is not an insignificant thing. As more people said, more eloquent than I, and I just alluded to, the school social worker, what they can do can only be replicated by someone going to Rattleboro, which is not going to happen with a lot of these kids, or someone coming here. And I can tell you from my own experience with working with some of my own students and just being involved in various things, the waitlist, like you call your substitute for Susan Gunthermore and find out when your kid, who's in crisis, right this moment and would maybe like to commit suicide. You find out when that, he's going to get an appointment. It's not a happy story. This is, because there is crisis mode everywhere. So if we lose this connection in our school, we're not going to replace it in any efficient and meaningful fashion by making outside calls to other people. Thirdly, I'd like to mention that part of what our school is about, which I'm a big fan of, I'm part of, and I applaud Bob for supporting it, is restorative justice. And it's, and it's, it's working its way into our school culture, it's a good thing. And I think, I don't know if you folks know this, but what Susan does in the elementary schools is actually, already she's doing restorative circles and restorative practices with our elementary kids, which is really where you need, if you want to change a culture, you need to start it there. I'm starting an organization, we have a, you know, nonprofit organization, Restorative Community Justice of Southern Vermont, to bring that culture to our entire area because we really need it. So the school right now is, is a, is a place where it's happening and it's having some success, and has a chance to move in lots of different directions, and a supportive principal. By losing this particular social worker, let alone the idea of losing a social worker period, we're losing a vital link between our elementary kids and restorative practices, which will make a tremendous difference in the learning capacity of this school when those kids get up here. When we're talking about the learning situation, when you have a kid who is in crisis, and if I can send that kid to Susan Gunthermore and that kid can come back in a space where I can deal with him, that child can learn. They cannot learn if they don't have, you know, if some kid comes, he could be in crisis, I might be lucky, I might be able to like talk him down. That's pure luck. Our counselors, they might be lucky, they've got some skills. That's not what we have with a social worker, and I'm sorry. So when we lost the secretary, you know, maybe we could take that salary and get a school counselor with that much of the money and keep this gig. But I don't, I don't think this is the time, and maybe the arg- That's pure luck. Our counselors, they might be lucky, they've got some skills. That's not what we have with a social worker, and I'm sorry. So, when we lost the secretary, you know, maybe we could take that salary rate and get a school counselor with that much of the money and keep this gig. But I don't think this is the time, and maybe the argument can be made, but I think there's sort of a pact with the voters, which people will rightly or wrongly take as bad faith. And I think that we're jumping the gun on something, I think we're not giving the students who deserve it and need it the most a fair shake, and I think we're not really honestly addressing our needs.
I'm Beth McDonald, I'm a community member, a parent, that graduated, one is a junior, one that's last year went to elementary school. And I know Bob, this is really hard, so I'm not here hammering you or anything. But I just, I have such a good relationship with Susan. I've utilized her for my family. I'm here a lot, I think a number of you can attest to that. So, I know a lot of the kids, and I adore them. Susan's now at the game, she's at the function, so when I can go to her and say, you know, I'm a little worried about so-and-so, because I do participate as a parent, but there are a number of parents that don't. And I agree with you that our job here primarily is to educate, but I do think that schools, and how this happened, I don't know how, but have been tasked with not just educating, teachers have been educating, parenting, and how it seems like getting into mental health. And I just don't, I find that maybe right now is not the time, that we need to maybe go back and look at some other things, but to be able to know that I can call Susan, who's here, and the kids now are, kids from Wyndham are going to come here, the kids from the other elementary school that she goes to are going to come here, she's a tremendous connection. She is part of the community. I think we got to stay local. And I just want to give my support to Susan, and give my support to you in that, you know, anything that we can do as, I don't want to say I'm the parent here, but anyway, I can certainly raise some other people in, but, you know, I would like to just see Susan here for as long as possible.
Could I add something?
Sure.
I guess I want, I can't speak anywhere near as powerfully as the people in this room can, so I'm not even going to try. But I will say that the last time we had an opportunity to discuss budget cuts, there were a lot of students in the audience. And there aren't a lot of students here today because my job is confidential. And I'm not going to ask students or their parents to come and sing my praises, but I think they're there. And I just wanted you to know that. And that's it.
I'm Jen Connor from Jamaica, and I've worked in this building and for the WCSU. And I'm here first and foremost to support Susan, but I think what needed to be said about Susan has been said. I am also here to support Bob because he's coming in to try to help us through some pretty rocky times. And I'm sure that doing this, he did not intend to leave anybody high and dry. And I'm standing here to say to especially people who are in the audience, who have had kids here, who have graduated, we can't help with the social work part of it. But I think part of the problem with the counseling part is that there's not enough hours in the day to help the kids who need to go to college or need to find other avenues after they graduate. There's not enough hours for the counselors to help them. That is something people can help with. There are kids who don't feel they're well-served, and it's not because the counselors aren't doing their jobs. Again, not enough time. Tom met with a student this week who said, I need, you know, I need help, what do you think? And he was looking for outside input. I sell my work at the Dorset Farmer's Market every weekend, and I'm privy to conversations with a lot of parents who send their kids to burn burden. Those parents and community members, people whose kids have already graduated, spend tremendous amount of time supporting that school. And we all boo-hoo about how much money they have, and that's important, but they also have a lot of support from their community, and we don't have enough. And quite frankly, I think it's time for a lot of us to put on our big girl underpants and not just step in when somebody's been getting ripped, but to put down on paper what our strengths are and get our butts in the hearing and help out. Because he can't do it without riffing people. So, if we want to help...
What does riff mean?
Reduction in force. Thank you. So, you know, unfortunately, Tom and I are looking at moving out of this community pretty soon, but there are a lot of you who will be lifers, and you simply need to step up to the plate. And I hope you will.
Well, how much money are we talking about? What is the difference in pay between a full-time counselor and a full-time social worker approximately?
There's no difference. They're both on the teaching salary, teacher's contract.
So, why can we not just have a one full-time counselor and one full-time social worker for our increase in exchange for losing our secretary?
We could do that. My concern for that is I think we're going to have a huge percentage of things that aren't being met on the school counselor side. And I want to, and so there's a couple of things, just to kind of add on to that, I think, a couple of things that came up in the discussions, and I did say that Susan's fantastic because I believe that she is, and it's not a doubt in my mind, I've been very honest with her about it. When you're doing these kinds of jobs and you're looking at things from a thirty-thousand-foot level, you really have to try to separate the person from the position and not make it about who the person is, and really try to make it about what the position is and what the job duties are and those kinds of things. So, that makes it really challenging, but that's really the way that we have to go about it. And so, yes, she does a great job, and that's not, that never has been a doubt, this is not about performance, any stretch of the imagination. And so, I think that's something I wanted to make sure I was clear on, that I'm not, this is not a get-Susan thing. Susan and I have talked, she understands this from my perspective. I also want to say I think that there's a gross underrepresentation of what the skills of a school counselor are. Like, there's been a lot of conversation around that guidance counselors are this thing that kind of just do college stuff and that's it, and there's no other parts of their job. They don't call them guidance counselors anymore, first of all, they call them school counselors, and there's a reason for that. They have more of a background in the counseling piece to keep kids in school and keep kids engaged in the academics of what's going on. I think we give, we underserve what their expertise is by a lot of the discussions, just want to put that out there. And I agree that there's a ginormous mental health crisis right now. I think that's affecting a lot of different people in a lot of different ways, and we're certainly not immune to it. I think, and that's where I came to the idea of not, not saying that mental health isn't an important way, it's not, and obviously not believing that we don't need to take care of kids' mental health. That's, I don't want that message to be sent. What I'm trying to get at is that when you get to a situation where you have limited resources and you have to make hard decisions, you have to think about what the primary focus of the institution is. It doesn't mean that we don't care about mental health. And in fact, by increasing the overall FTEs of the counseling department as a whole, we, I think that's demonstrating that we are concerned about mental health of kids. So, I understand, and we're not all going to agree on to what degree we're meeting which needs and to what degree we're not. So, I think, I mean, I don't have a dollar amount to that because they make the same pay. Equal education, with equal experience, in those two positions, make the same amount of money, to answer your question.
Yeah, so given that pay, the money would be the same. What we're doing here is something that I've been fighting against since, for a while now, which is we're reducing, we're eliminating a service, okay? We're not reducing the size of a department, and as you point that, we're actually increasing the size of the department, but we're taking away a critical service that has an impact on the whole school. There's more to having a social worker here than the work the social worker does. It's having a social worker for that other counselor to get information from when they need it. The knowledge of that, of social work spreads out from that person, and now we're, that's being eliminated entirely from the school, and I can't support that.
Well, keep in mind how I concluded the original conversation, that I do think there is probably to be able to do a day a week, you know, so just, it's not a total elimination, it would reflect a reduction, but not a total elimination.
Yeah, I still, I would prefer to see a full-time social worker than a full-time counselor. And that way, we do have both bases covered. Yet, the counselor may have to do a little bit more work, maybe the social worker might have to do a little counseling to cover the workload, but at least we're still providing both services to our community on-site for kids who need it, rather than outsourcing that completely. Again, it's a big difference between taking a department from five staff people down to four and then eliminating a service entirely. And the fact that it's being done, again, coming back to, this whole thing seems to be triggered by a secretary quitting her job, which doesn't sit well with the community. And again, I'm sure you've put a lot of thought into it, but we have to look at how this appears to people who just say, hey, the secretary quit, and now we're losing our social worker. Where was the thought behind this? It's hard to explain that to the community when they just see, hey, a beloved staff member is now being eliminated.
Yeah, to answer your question about the one-on-one, I guess I wouldn't, I'd have to think a little bit about that, but off the top of my head, I don't think I could support that. I think we would, we would lose, because at that point, you're talking about reducing the 1.25 counseling to one, and I just don't think we, I think we're already struggling in that area from a school counseling standpoint. I think that you're reducing significant services there to a very wide array of kids. I don't think that's a great solution either. I understand your point, but I just don't think that's the way to go either.
And just a piece of information, Howie, about the student-to-school counselor ratio. The EQS, the new educational quality standards state that at the high school level, it's one to two hundred. That would be a caseload for one full-time, one FTE, school counselor. So, to say it's one to one isn't following those guidelines.
So, are we in line with the new guidelines, when they say one to two hundred? Does that one count as just for a high school population?
Well, and the other 0.25 of my position is to cover that. And does it? No, it doesn't. Initially, when I took the position as an administrator, the position I was at, point five, FTE, school counselor and point five. The second year, I recommended to be, to reflect more accurately what my position really was as the grade seven and eight school counselor, and that was to be point two-five and point seven-five administration.
One more question, Lon, which is if we vote down this reduction in force, we don't grant it to you, so the result would be that we keep the status quo, we hire another secretary? Am I correct in making that assumption?
Well, I don't, I mean, does the board want to give me that level of direction around whether or not I replace a secretary? I mean, if you're telling me, if you're not authorizing a riff, then there's no riff, that part is, that's within your purview for sure. I don't know, do you want to go down that road? I would be able to respond to that at this point.
What your plan was if this is the...
Does he authorize it?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't really gone down that road at this point.
Only me, non-licensed. It's only super technical.
Okay, Gerald?
I'm Gerald Julian Sissé, resident of Newthing, and I also teach Spanish and English as a second language here at the school. And so, a couple of points that I wanted to make, and one, aside from the person, the position, I've been more, at more than a few EST 504 staffing meetings with a group of teachers, administrators, the counselors, and the social worker there. And as we try to come upon a plan that works for the students, students that are in crisis, how their behaviors might be academically in the classes, and we might all come up with a good idea, and then Susan, or the social worker wearing, bringing her expertise to this, will look at our approach and maybe fine-tune it in a way that really takes into account that deeper understanding of the student and mental health needs. And Mel, you do a great job at the meetings, and what you bring to it, or Sarah does, but there's this other piece sometimes that is looking at, and perhaps it's because Susan sits with these students and in confidence understands something, that maybe our well-fought plans do not necessarily serve the student as best as could, and we make changes at times. So, that position is still very important within our school, and again, as many have said, you know, allowing for the students to learn and be educated. So, that's one point I want to make, and then aside, it's what Susan also brings to the students, to the community here, especially the groups, and yes, other people can come in and put those together, but not in that, you know, amount of time that the other is a point-two position of the other two counselors that come in. It really means someone being here more consistently, and that those groups have really formed so that those kids, even if, you know, Susan's not here on those other two days, or they, you know, they don't want to go to another adult, they have each other because they've established that. And that also is really essential for students to be able to make it through the day sometimes. I know that, I hear that from my students. So, the other thing I wanted to reflect on was also Dan's point about when the budget was voted upon and what positions and what we all thought, you know, where we stood, what we were losing, what we were gaining, how it all came down in the end. And yes, we voted on it, and as he said, we supported the school and the budget two to one. I would like to say maintain Susan's position, if not increase it because of the secretarial funds there, but for the next year, and for our year 2018-19 budget, propose this. Because I think if you do, you will see the same kind of response and public expression as you saw back in December when the budget was first being proposed with the cuts and the programs that were being talked about. I think the community has that right to know what they want the school to, how they want to fund the school and function. So, I would say it would be really important to just keep it as it is, and, you know, whatever, whether we hire another secretary, take that secretary position, funds, and hire a part-time counselor to help with the overload, extend Susan's hours here, increase them. That, and I'm just wondering what the financial outcome will be in that, all right, we don't have that secretary. This year, a number of our teachers are retiring, and so you've got a number of people leaving here at the top end of the pay scale. I imagine we are hiring in folks that are not quite at that level of pay scale. So, what does that do for our financial projections for 1819? And so, I guess I would like to say, look at those financial pieces, we might be able to increase Susan as well as increase the counseling department for that extra bit. Maybe it's in part-time position, whatever it might be, or another full-time position. But I really think to look, one, to the budget for 1819, but also give the voters that chance to say what they do or don't want to see in our school, and what they'll allow, because many of us were at that meeting in December, and it would not have passed if those cuts were left in.
What's the projected enrollment for that student?
Two hundred and sixty.
Two sixty?
Plus whatever tuition students.
I have a question. You just granted two leaves of absence to teachers who've been here for a while. I don't, I really, I don't know how long they've been here.
I'm sorry, what?
How long have you been here?
This is my sixth year.
Okay, and I don't know how long Brenson's been around, but I wonder if you can anticipate savings from those two leaves of absence, two folks are leaving. I don't know what...
Entirely depends on the pool.
And it's only for one year.
Yeah.
Well, it's one year.
Is math and science?
Sure enough.
Yeah, I don't need to say much more than that. Yeah, I don't know, we could have some, we might not.
That's a very practical, quick thing. So, if the enrollment next year is going to be two sixty, and the recommendation is two hundred for a counselor, that means we basically need a 1.3 position for next year. we basically need a 1.3 position for next year. So, Mel's 0.25, we're basically right there. So, I guess I'm-
With tuition students, it'd be about three hundred and three students.
Three hundred and three, okay, so then you need one and a half. But we're still like, you're talking about eliminating a 0.6 to actually be over-counseled by, according to guidelines. So, you're, you're over-filling one position and totally eliminating, as we've seen, a hugely important position. That, I, I guess I'm just confused by that. Bob, you know, Bob, I don't want to, I know you've actually been a, when I talk about emotional intelligence, you're really, you know, I'm not taking this personal, and I hope that, you know, I know you're trying to be creative about this, but I think the thirty thousand view, as you've called it, is missing something really big, and I do think my experience as an employer and a successful business person is never, ever underestimate the particular person. It is more important than position. I know not if you need a math teacher, obviously you can't fill that with anyone, but in terms of positions out like that, that's, I strongly, that's not my experience.
Go ahead.
So, um, first of all, thank you all for being here. It's really important that people are feeling so passionate about Leland and Gray, and our students, and our communities, because, um, we're coming on a time that we're going to need that passion and that support. Um, we know that each year, um, we're probably going to have to make some pretty deep cuts coming. So, as, um, Mr. Tebow said earlier, this is the first one, maybe, um, but it's probably going to be an awful lot more. So, you know, if we can get people coming to our meetings for good things, like Jenny was talking about, getting people engaged, and I remember a long time ago, we were trying to keep a parent, um, teacher organization going, and we did everything we could to keep it going, and we couldn't keep it going because, um, people are busy, and they don't have the time to put into it. Maybe this will be a time when we'll get that sort of thing going again, because I think that's what it's going to take. Um, I've been a school board member for a long time, and none of these conversations are ever easy. They are painful. I know every one of you out there, and I've worked with staff, I'm still on the standards board, um, I feel passionate about what we offer our kids and about our staff. But if we start acting in the role of running the school, we are letting down not only our communities and our administration, we're letting down our students. So, um, the role has always been for me to separate, um, people from positions, and to say, we need to take the advice in the best way we can, with the most knowledge that we can gather from the administrators that we hire, and we need to make sure that those administrators are the best administrators that we can bring in. And I have worked with some incredibly good administrators, and some that weren't as good as others. And, um, I can be totally confident right now that we have, uh, an extremely strong, powerful administrative team in this school. I am not an educator, I won't ever be an educator, um, but I have to trust the educators, the instructional leader, and the educational leader that we hire to make good recommendations to us. And so, what my job is, is to ask the questions that are most important and fundamental to the decisions we make, and that is, you know, have you taken into consideration all of the options, which we certainly have been as- asking you at the administration that, and are, are students harmed by this? And is there a way to mitigate the loss from one area and look at building in another area to make sure our students' needs are being met? It is absolutely true, what everyone said, um, I, I hear it all the time in Montpelier about the, the greater needs of our students and our families today. The opiate crisis has had a huge impact. What I need to know as a board member, and what I think this board needs to know, is are we going to be able to continue to meet the needs of our kids? And if we are going with the direction that you're recommending, and I, I will just say that thank you for coming to us, because you actually don't need our permission to, um, adjust your staffing level, I believe. Am I right, Bill?
That's technically correct.
Typically-
It's not the way we're going to do business.
Right, and but I, well, it isn't, and, and that's why I say thank you, because in some schools, that wouldn't happen, right? And, and I'm very grateful that it does here, because I think we need to have these conversations and to, to know that our kids' needs are being met. And so, um, I'm hearing that it's an adjustment, it's a change, but what I want to make sure, the question that concerns me most, are that our students who are most vulnerable will have someone to go to when they are in need in the building every day. And so, I need that reassurance from you to make sure that that can happen. And, and it is very hard for me to separate this conversation from what I know my job is as a board member, because, um, I do care, you know, about everybody out there and about our kids. So, I'd like to have an answer to that, to make sure that that's, thank you, Mel.
So, I'm, I'm Susan Supervisor, I, um, and, um, it's an honor to be in that position for her and our other counselor. Um, six years has now passed since this, my position evolved from a full-time school counselor to its present state. Um, because enough time has passed, we have the opportunity to be reflective of these past years. Um, I can, I can sit here and honestly say that in the current position that I have as a 0.25 middle school counselor and as a 0.75 administrator, that, um, their, their services to students, I think, have been affected by this model. Um, I, I think it produced tremendous savings for our district. I was willing to cer- and am still willing with full heart to, to make this work. I, and because time has passed, I think people, uh, it may be that they don't know, if, if they're newer, uh, the full force of what a school counselor can do. Um, before, and part of the change of the name from a guidance counselor to a school counselor is that years ago, when I was really young, it's my thirtieth year as a school counselor, we were called guidance counselors because we were considered to be an ancillary service. We were not an integral part of a school's programs and curriculum. And I was thrilled for the name change, because since the name change, the school counselor indicates that we are fully an integral part of an educational program. And our national organization organizes us around the whole-child concept. So, there are three domains of college and career, academic and social and emotional. Those domains are, are realized through four areas that the school counselor, um, in, in four, four areas that the school counselor works. One of them, which a lot of people don't know, the degree to which school counselors should be in a classroom, delivering a curriculum. At the, at the elementary, uh, the middle school level, it should be thirty-five percent of the counselor's time should be in a classroom. That would be me. Twenty-five percent of a high school's counselor should be in the classroom. So, it's a quarter of the time, more than, more than a quarter of my position. Another area is responsive services, and we are absolutely clear that we are not therapists. However, we do, we have received extensive training to run groups, I think someone has mentioned that, to run groups, um, to provide individual support. But again, we're trying to service, you know, serve as many people as possible, so groups sometimes makes the most sense. The other area is system support, and looking at the system and, and the management of it, the programs that we offer and can bring in and be available to students working with parents, and then individual planning, which again, is now in this day and age, managing personalized learning plans and, and assisting with the college and career process. I, I'm, I, I mean, there, and I know we're using the word breadth when we're talking, and that's a large skill set, but, but it, but it also is deep. Um, and I think that this conversation, um, in part, is to, is to look at reorganizing and, so that what you're asking can be met through a school counselor. And, you know, if I, somebody had said to me six years ago that this would be happening with these good people supporting the work of Susan Gunther Moore, I would have said, I doubt it. We had to fight hard to make, to get Susan, um, in our building as a licensed school social worker. So, there, there is a tremendous benefit there, and I think Bob's recommendation for earlier, which is in the original letter, for one day, is important. Um, we, I think we were, from what I could tell when we had put Susan's position in place, there weren't many schools in Vermont. We, we were, we were cutting edge, um, for, for her support. Um, so, it, it, I, I do want to say that in terms of school counseling, that, um, it is, and it will always be nearest and dearest to my heart for the work that I've seen produced. But I'm not sure we've seen fully what two school counselors, following our national, um, program and a national model, um, can do. I don't think we've seen that at Leland and Gray.
Can I ask a question?
And this again, I want to be clear, is not about my saying it's one for the other, but I want to, I really want to give information around the role of a school counselor. And the other thing I think I want to say is, it's great to have support at this level, but I always have wondered where the support is at the elementary level and in our local communities. We have tried to be incredibly creative with Susan's position, to have her be a bridge between our elementary school students and here. But there, again, she's one person, and two of those schools she's working in will not, will not receive her services next year. Um, but there, that is a bigger issue with mental health, that we all know the earlier you can intervene, the greater chances that you have for mentally well students entering Leland and Gray, so.
You have a question?
Um, I do. So, Mel, thank you for that description, because I really needed a little clarity around that subject. I was alarmed, I think Amanda wrote this letter in the seventeen percent and all these bullet points. It, Susan is the only person that can address these issues, because that's bothersome if she's only here three days, and all of this is on her plate. So, that's my first question.
No, a school counselor can address many of those. I mean, I think if you have a student who's, who's, um, ideizing suicide, then you're probably going to, obviously you're going to be referring to someone who HCRS or crisis counselor.
Okay.
But the vast majority of these things, you know, whether it's grief counseling, um, students who are just feeling out of sorts, um, self-harm, right, in conjunction with school nurse, there's a lot of, you know, and obviously the bullying and harassment stuff. Um, counselors, administrators, a lot of us deal with all these kinds of things on a regular basis. Um, so, yeah.
You were next, and then we'll go out there.
I just wanted to clarify what you said, Melvin. Thank you for this very comprehensive response. Um, and I'm just kind of putting you on the spot here. As far as you're concerned, eliminating the school social worker position as an on-campus position is an acceptable trade-off for having two full-time school counselors?
So, again, I, I think another thing that we put in place several years ago now was the addition of two therapists, licensed two therapists who come into our school throughout the week to offer groups. It, it is, it's a, it's a model that we, again, we thought it was great, we were saving a lot of money for the district, but also to extend and expand the services offered by our, not only our school social worker in the therapeutic realm, but also the, the school counseling department. So, I, I mean, I, I think that, again, was a model that we wanted to continue to expand here. But so, and that's been happening now for, since, you know, like I said, several years. It, I get that, that it is all about relationship. I think, um, community is about the participation with one another. I, I mean, that's, we don't, I, we don't, we're not well in isolation. So, I get that this is, this is truly about Susan as a person, um, but, but again, it, I'm not trying to say it's either or. But, but again, we have tried to develop a model to offer students therapy, counseling, clinical services, because they can't all get to Brattleboro. This is a hub for, for our communities, our surrounding communities.
But outside consultants cannot, can they actually develop a relationship with students?
They have.
The way that a onsite person can?
Um, I, I think the piece that we're talking about is that they, they are direct services for our students. The piece that, um, isn't in place with that is the, is the consultation piece around our faculty, and, and if they have questions, so as a support, which I think Bob's suggestion of adding a day back, we would hope could address some of those things. But to continue to look at, you could put fifty people in, and we'll, and we'll have needs. We will have needs here for our students. Um, so, I, I'm not sure if that answers.
Barbara, then Dan.
Um, so, you just described having a social worker as a cutting-edge thing that, that this school did five or six years ago. You're going to go backwards and remove it?
Oh, I, I think we were ahead of the curve, was my point.
And so, and I think in my own research, more than half the schools in Vermont now have a school social worker. So, why would we eliminate that? And the other thing is, if this succeeds, you'll have a new counselor, and we haven't done the PLPs yet, and we're starting a brand-new way of looking at, um, how we're going to educate kids. I forget, it's not competencies, it's proficiencies. I just, I don't know how we're going to do that. I mean, I have some of the most vulnerable kids in my advisory, and I can't get them to do anything. So, I don't know. I just, I think this is a really bad idea, and I, I wish we could have a vice principal and two full-time counselors, because I see the need. When I came here, there were students, there were two principals and a dean of students. Over the last twenty years, those have gotten chip, 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 chip down, and then all the little different details have been loaded onto somebody over here, and loaded onto somebody over here, and I, I feel the place is beginning to unravel. And, and we need Susan to keep, to keep it. Um, the most vulnerable ones will get in the way of the education of everybody else, and that's no way to attract tuition students either. If you come to school with the assets, where you have parents who are choosing, actively choosing a school for you, and you're, they're clothed and dressed and bathed, and have a place where they can do their homework, they could go anywhere. They're not going to come here, you know, if, um, there's, we have needs around classroom management, because so many kids are not willing to engage in their education. And I, I just don't know, I almost became a school counselor, but I just think we need all of it, and I, I don't know what, I haven't heard on this level, what the counseling department isn't able to do. But I, I do see what Susan is able to do. And as Jenny was saying, we have, we had a, someone here from VSAC today helping kids with college stuff. I know Amanda's helped students with their college stuff. I mean, I, I, I'm just deeply, uh, disturbed by this idea.
That's fine.
I urge you not to-
When Mel was giving us that description, I, I appreciate it, because I believe you. I believe that, you know, it's way more than just finding pathways to college. But you had one statement, and it wasn't a throwaway statement. You said, I don't, I don't do therapy. And then you continued. So, listening to that, things like, there's a lot of stuff you guys do. You don't do therapy. That is the one thing. That's, that's really, and this is why I think it's absolutely the board's, this is something that, this isn't like micromanaging the principal, I think. This is, this is a philosophical question for the board. Do you believe that mental health has become the purview of schools? Because if you do, then you don't deny, granted, the very small number. I don't know if it'd be two, I don't know if it'd be twenty-two, or if it'd be ten, but there will be a number of people who will not get the therapy that they would get with a school social worker, and they will not get it. You cannot pretend that the current social service structure of the state of Vermont is going to come in and cover a safety net for those kids, because they are not going to do it. The current social service structure of Vermont is massively overtaxed and overrun and overburdened and overscheduled. So, you, if you do this, you're making a choice that is going to severely hurt a very small number of kids. That might be your choice to do, but I don't think you should, can pretend that it's all going to be covered.
Um, I have no doubt in my mind that the counselors we have currently helped the kids in this school. But my problem with having two counselors and not having a social worker is that you say here yourself, in this, where is it? Right here, that a social worker can do more in-depth therapeutic counseling. And you're going to tell me, like Howie said, we're a family and we're a community, and you're going to tell me that, I'm sorry, but you're going to tell me that my family members aren't going to be able to get the best help that they can get. going to be able to get the best help that they can get by not having a social worker? That seriously worries me. Because I know that if I were in one of those situations, I would want the best help that I can get, and I want that for everybody. And like I said, I have no doubt in my mind that the counselors that we have now help people, but I think that it's seriously concerning that you're going to tell me that you can't give them the best help they can get. And I understand that there's a lot of work for counselors to do, and that there are multiple positions needed to fulfill that work. But, I mean, we just had people in the audience say that we already have so many people that help us with college here. Like, we have people that come in for V S A C, we have Ms. D., she does stuff in 11th grade English. I mean, that doesn't even have to do with English, but it's still part of her class. We do college research there. I mean, Ms. L. helps us in eight, both A P English and 12th grade English. She has us write our college essays. She always is reminding us about scholarships. I mean, we still have Mary Martin, she does so much for us, and it has to come to do with scholarships, to do with transcripts ending. I mean, and Sarah is a great resource when it comes to doing anything that has to do with college. And I understand that the most help that you can get with college too is great. Every kid deserves to have that chance, but it's just really, really concerning to me when you tell me that you're not going to give my family members and my peers the best help that they need, when they feel like they're suicidal, or they feel like they don't belong in this community. It's just, it's really concerning.
Jenny?
Last one. Emily, what you said earlier was that, you know, you come and you, and you have to listen to what, what the administration says, and that is your job, and you have to separate yourself. At the same time, the whole point of these meetings and getting, you know, asking people to come, and I know often people don't come, and is to have this give and take, and to give us the opportunity to hear what Bob has to say, and maybe change our minds a little, or, or understand better. But at the same time, it's to give you guys the opportunity to hear what people have to say, and, and perhaps change some minds too.
You ready for the vote?
One final point?
Oh, it's not, because Howie had his hand up too. Oh, sorry, you go.
Well, I was about to call a question, but before I call, before I call, I just want
to say, I can't support this, Bob, I'm really sorry. I don't think it's an appropriate time to bring up the reduction in force, we're sort of midway through the year, thinking needs more consideration. I see the people sitting out in the audience, for every person out there, there's 100 people that support them that couldn't show up. I don't see one person showing up here saying, "This is a great idea, let's eliminate our social worker and have two counselors." I mean, 30,000 feet, it may look like a great idea, and maybe it is, and something to be included in next year's budget conversation, but we have to listen to the community if we want the community to support us. And I don't see any support for this. So I want to call the question, if anybody wants to second me on that, and that's, I can't support.
Is there a second for that?
It doesn't.
It doesn't need a second.
I was hoping you won't cut off Bowman.
But actually, Bowman was first, then you said, well, I was going to call a question.
I'm just going to say my thoughts, which pretty much follows what Howie said. At the December budget meeting, we had a very animated and large group of people who participated, and decisions were made, and a budget was voted on. This decision right now would, I feel, no matter how we present it, would kind of undermine the trust and confidence we have from the community. And coming on the tails of the radon fiasco, this is not, this is going to be compounding it. So from a P R standpoint, I'm sorry, Bob, but this is a bad idea, regardless of the merits or lack of merits of the whole discussion. Just wanted to add that into everything else I was saying tonight.
Kelly, did you want one last?
Bowman just said it. I learned a lot being on the board this last year. You know, Bob, you weren't on the board the last two years before this, to hear us consistently as a board talk about mental health and how absolutely vital it is to this school. I mean, we've said it as a board many times. Putting all that aside, I absolutely want to support you as our administration. I just think it's vital to this school for you to hear that. December taught me that the community can be trusted. We decided to throw it back, you guys said you'd get us the vote for the budget, and I feel like that was a contract with our voters, and that means something to me.
Go ahead. Everybody can have one.
My main concern is the students, the ones that are, the ones that are going to fall through the cracks, that aren't going to be able to get to Brattleboro to get the help they may need, that may not even realize that they're in that position until a friend or they talk to a teacher, and they get directed to someone who will be there for them. I think it comes down to what's best for the student body. And I, I, I know that you feel that too, and I, I want to say yes to this, but I just, it could be one or two students that are going to fall through the cracks. And that's one or two too many.
So since we're going down the line, I guess you're going to let me hunt one too?
Anybody?
So I'm just going to say, I'm going to be right up front, you've already heard me, I'm going to be very brief, that I, I hear Chloe and I understand what she's saying, but I believe that there is, there will be supports for our students, and that there won't be children falling through the cracks. I have absolute confidence that that will happen, and I will be holding the administration accountable for doing that. So, which is what my job is to do. So I, I'm going to support this, because I think a lot of thought and effort has gone into it, and I think it's the right thing for us to do at this point in time.
We'll just go down the line. I, I agree with Emily, it comes down to, you know, I think you saw an opportunity to, to begin the restructuring. I think it's been well thought out and it's well presented. I trust you and the counselors to do the right thing by the children, and I think you're giving it your best effort. I, I too support it. As difficult as the decision as this is for you and, and for us, evidenced by this room full of people, you know. But again, you know, that's what we hired you to do, and, you know, thanks for bringing this, and I do support you.
We're going to go right down the line. So this is a very difficult discussion, a very difficult decision. I'm sure it did not come to the board after a lot of, without a lot of discussion. This is the first of many of these discussions. We talked at length during the budget process about the need to right-size our education system. Next year's budget season is not going to be any better than last year's budget season. As we look forward at a merged school district, we're going to have to make very difficult decisions. And every time there's going to be a reduction in force, we're going to see the same outcry of support for positions, for programs, to prevent the restructuring. The simple fact is, we can't continue to do the same thing in our school and come up with a different result. We have to make these difficult changes, and we, I have to believe that our administration has put the time and energy into research to make sure that these supports are in place for our students. So I will be supporting.
But this isn't about budget, so why would you?
Long-term, this is about funding and coming up with a reorganization for our school. We've tasked our administration with restructuring our education system to fit the needs of our students. As we've heard tonight, our student enrollment is half of what it was. We're still going with a model that had twice as many students. As we go forward in the next year, in the next two years, our entire education system in this area needs to be restructured. And we have to trust that the administration is doing the job that we've tasked them to do, providing us the information that we need to make these decisions. We've asked the difficult questions, we understand it's going to be a different service to students. I understand it's going to be a different service to students, but our students are still going to be served. And that's why I have to support the administration's recommendation.
Now I'll call the question. Well, we've all had the final say now, so I mean, there's just nothing left. All right. Just because I expect this is probably going to be a close vote, we'll just do show of hands. All in favor of the motion to approve the reduction in force, please raise your hand. Opposed? No abstentions? Okay, motion, motion fails. All right. I'm sorry. Yeah, we have, next would be the student report, we have a written report. Anything in there you want to highlight for us? Anything that's like amazing or terrible, or?
Oh, yeah, I got something, Dominic didn't put it in here, but seniors want Spirit Week on a lighter note.
Doesn't that happen every year?
No, we.
Because juniors want a big grade.
Okay.
We're going to win again next year.
All right.
Sorry, so does that mean the motion fails, the reduction in force won't happen?
Correct.
Appreciate you guys listening.
Okay, so congratulations to the seniors for winning Spirit Week.
Thanks.
Anything else you want to pull out of that, or?
I guess to summarize, basketball, the girls did well, the boys put in their best effort. The unified season is still going, they had a game tonight in Springfield. Hats off with great, I saw it. Student council is going to go into a retreat to talk over how student council functions, that sort of thing. Baseball, softball has started, there's a bubble soccer fundraiser.
Oop, stop there. I want to put emphasis on that, because the senior class is doing a lot, putting in a lot of effort for fundraising, and we're a little behind right now. So I want to put out that we really need some help with that. And also, we're doing a 50-50 raffle, one for one or six for five. I got a lot of chickens.
And lastly, soon, as in Thursday and Wednesday, students will be leaving for Thailand and England and Ireland. And I brought along the itineraries for both those trips and the hats-off program for you guys to look at.
Cool, thank you. Do you think, do you think Al still wants you? Bill?
I think he lost.
You think he lost you? Okay. Those are hats-off programs and the.
There's a bunch of different things here. The itineraries for.
The itinerary for the trip.
Oh, oh.
It's just stuff that you can see that pertains to his report. No, 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 no. Okay, so Bob, I'm looking at your report that's brand-new.
Yep, so there's a couple of things, I just want to add quickly to that before I go through it, and I'll go through it quickly, I know it's late. One is, we've been in negotiation with West River Valley Thrives to develop a lease agreement, where they would give up their rental space that they have down the street, and would lease classroom space from us. We've worked out a cost based on square footage percentage and utility usage percentage. Laurie Garland came up with some calculations to do that, and so what I have here, and I think Joe has a copy of it, is a lease agreement written up by our legal counsel, that basically has, if you guys want to enter into this agreement, will bring us just over $8,000, I think, in revenue. And it will have them in our building 12 months of the year. The space that we were referring to, I don't think it identifies the space in here. It might, is A 13, which is one of the inside classrooms, right at the top of the stairs in A level, that's sort of opposite the bathrooms right there. Which makes sense, because the S A P office, which they pay for that person, is the office right across the hall. So I guess I'm looking for you guys to see if you're interested in taking on this agreement to generate some revenue and have a community partnership with West River Valley Thrives in our building.
Okay. I have a copy of the lease, if anybody wants to see it.
I don't need to see it, I think it's great.
Otherwise, we would just need a motion to.
Anybody want to look at?
Enter into and authorize me to sign it.
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kelly moved it, and there were seconds everywhere.
Twilight's second.
I have a question. So what hours do they need to access this? Do they, are they pretty much a nine-to-five operation?
I would say probably more like school hours, but there will be extra times in the weekends and obviously the summer.
So they get a key to the place just to open it up whenever they need to?
Yep. I mean, we can control access if it's a concern by having the lock on their room be a different lock that's keyed singularly? So there'll be an outside key and a singular key that wouldn't open anything else, if that's an area of concern for the board?
Probably not any of their personnel doing anything, but if their keys were to happen to get lost, it would be way less rekeying for us to.
Sure.
To save a key there. Any other questions pertaining to the lease?
One-year lease?
Right. So all in favor of entering in, it's been moved and seconded to enter into the lease with West Valley River, West River Valley Thrives, it's late, and to authorize me as chair to sign the lease. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You got, we got the lease.
All right. The second item to mention, which is again not on the report, is according to board policy, I have to notify you of international travel. And I've done that several times throughout the year, as we've had trips planned. This one kind of slipped through my radar initially, but we do have a, because it's not really super international, they're going to Quebec, Montreal. But it is international, so by policy, I do need to let you guys know. June 7th through 11th, we have a small group of students, about 12, a couple chaparons headed to cross the border into Montreal, so notifying you of that to meet policy.
Excellent. Thank you.
The third thing that's not on the report that I want to highlight is having to do with snow day counts and the end of the year. So as you guys know, we have a contract for 185 days with, with the staff, professional staff, and at this point, with the current count of six days of cancellation that we had, including one postponement, not including one postponement of a P D day earlier, they would currently go until June 29th, which is fine, in the sense that it's still before, included within June 30th, the terms of the contract. But it, it does mean that there's a pretty substantial chunk of time at the end of the year, after the kids are gone, the staff will be here, five days. What I'm asking is for you guys to consider forgiving one day, to bring it to 184. And the logic of that is, is that there was one day in the fall where we had no power. So it wouldn't necessarily be a snow day removal, it would just be the one no-power day that we were prohibited from having school, that we would basically forgive that one day. And, you know, the contract, I think it says up to 185 days. So we're not, we're still within the contract for sure, but it was one of those things I wanted to make sure I ran by you guys before we just announced it.
So you would just need a motion to forgive that one day? Or make it one day?
Yeah, probably.
Yes.
Probably better have that on record.
Okay.
Oh, so moves, the days to 184.
Second. For this year.
For this year only.
For this year, yeah.
Correct.
Any discussion on that? No? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of changing the teacher days for this year to 184? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
This year only.
All right, this year only.
All right, and then getting into, I know you have something on your agenda now for buildings, but I do have several items at the top that are sort of updates on where we are with facility stuff, where we're on top of. This Wednesday, Ed and I are meeting with the engineers from C X Associates. This is to follow up on doing the efficiency formal analysis of our heating system and our lighting. This is the, sort of the phase one of getting the report to be able to determine what we're going to need to do. So we're meeting with them, they're doing a full tour of the building, looking at all facilities with Ed. I won't join them for that, but I will join them in advance to talk about what the scope of the project is, and I'll be able to report back to you guys next time on where we stand with that. Ed continues to do work on the HVAC system, in the meantime, replacing some motors that have been burnt out and valves that have been frozen in place. By replacing those parts, those are parts that we would have to do anyways, regardless of where we go with the heating system, and these will improve air circulation. The radon mitigation will take place next week during the school vacation week, Doug and Jim will be added on later. Uh, we've explored a grant through the Department of Health. They will pay up to $2,000 to go towards this work. So that should bring our, uh, bill down, probably close to 10. Well said, Dutton, with Dutton and the main board. But that's something that, um, I think if, if we, I guess there's two ways to go about that payment for that, so that one route could be that we just deficit spend in the building improvements line and just go into the end of the year knowing that we're deficit spending in that line. Or because of the amount of money that we're talking about, that you guys could authorize, uh, use of capital fund, of which there is, uh, upwards of $80,000 in. Um, and I've updated you guys a few months ago, that I don't think we've gone into that fund for three years or so, but there is about 80 or 83 that's still sitting there. We could use that money and not deficit spend the local budget, um, to do this work. So those are your options, I guess they're looking for, and if, and you do need a motion to use that capital fund money, if that's what you choose.
All right, you need an answer tonight?
Well, no, I mean, I guess if we spent it, they, they could transfer it if we wanted to do that. So we'll just spend on local in the meantime, and then if you guys choose to refund the local at the next board meeting.
There is a balance in the capital fund?
Yep, over $80,000.
Over $80,000, okay.
The next board meeting in May, then June, just, you know, as far as being able to wrap that budget system up. We want to do it relatively quickly, but we'll have a better idea of the dollar amount at that point.
Okay. That'll be probably the time to make that decision.
Yep. Um, and at the, uh, radon meeting, um, last month, there was a request to do some testing of the water. Uh, so Ed has been exploring that. Um, they test for uranium, which is the element that depletes creating radon. The radon itself, as it's a gas, is not in the water. So they test for uranium. Uh, I, he was able to locate some tests that were done in May, 2004, for uranium and the waters at that, the water's content at that point was below the federal limits and we were fine. But that was obviously a while ago and we'll test again. Just wanted to give you that update.
Testing at some expense?
Yeah, it's only a couple hundred bucks for the water test. Any building questions on any of those? I know you guys have, you, you had a radon update on your agenda anyways.
Just wanted to see where we were with the radon.
Yep.
I know the mitigation starts in a week.
Yep.
Can we just do that now so we can get our way through this agenda?
Yeah, that is the update they're coming next.
That's it.
Yeah, next meet, next meeting, you'll be able to, we'll be able to look and see the pipes in here that are taken here up and get some reports back on how it's working.
Good.
All right, uh, just, I'll just, I'll breeze through the other news real quick. Uh, we're, been updating somewhat regularly about this, but we're doing Alex Student of the Month program. And so we're a little behind because by the time we report, we have to wait for the Alex guys to come in to do the presentation. So that's why you're seeing the January one right now and not the February or March ones. So Sidney Hesketh from Wardsboro received that. Uh, I spent a week down North Carolina, which I told you about, the Center for Creative Leadership. Uh, it's part one of the Waddington Leadership Initiative. Incredibly rewarding experience. I'd love to go into more detail at some point if you guys want, but, um, I wanted to just explain that that's something that obviously is being paid for by grants through the Waddington Fund, through the VPA. Uh, the cost of putting a principal through that program is just under $20,000. And you're getting that for basically the cost of, uh, evening meals while I was there. That's pretty much it. Everything else is paid for. Um, so that's a pretty good bargain for, for the district. Uh, we've spent the last month interviewing candidates. We have, um, we have secured new hires in English, Music, Social Studies, and one of the instructional coaches, as you heard tonight for that leave of absence. We have still postings for interim science, interim math, and the other instructional coach, which we reposted. You know, once those things will all have been finally approved by cyclops, I'll deliver some names and just be more formal. I don't know what you guys have done in the past with that. But I'm happy to just provide names and a little background each one. I don't know how much you've done in the past or what you want. Just name,
That's all you're gonna do.
Okay. So this item we already talked about, we received a resignation from Mary Linsley, our counseling secretary. Her last day was in March. Um, we received a resignation from Emily Oberholzer, who's running our academy this year. Uh, her last day is this Friday. We're currently working on replacement to finish the year. So the snow day piece, I already told you about, the last student day is the 22nd. Teachers, by your agreement earlier, will now become the 28th. Graduation is still on the 17th. Keep that in mind, 10 a.m., hopefully outside in the field. Couple, uh, trainings that we've gone to, two of the science teachers, including Johanna, who is here. Jen McHusick and I attended a two-day training on next-generation science standards last month up in Burlington at the Echo Center, um, which is gonna lead us towards some work on how we're gonna teach science differently than how we have been teaching science. Very informative. Uh, today and tomorrow, I'm actually up at Killington, but had to obviously come back tonight, um, for this meeting. But we're, there's a team of us up there doing, working on proficiency-based graduation requirement work, um, with a trainer coming in, um, whose name is Karen Hess, ironically, but not the Karen Hess from, from the author who is from this area, but different Karen Hess. And that's been, today was great and I'm headed back up there in the morning for part two of that. And as, as these guys mentioned, unified basketball team, and I just wanted to say a little bit about that if you guys weren't sure about what that is. Unified Sports is a program that takes, um, roughly what, like a Special Olympics-type program with some of our disabled students and partners them with, um, what they call student partners. The athletes are the, are the, are the special needs students and the other kids are partners. And they work in conjunction on, in this, in this case, they play basketball. And the VPA last year started this league, um, and they have a full championship and everything. I mean, it's a, it's a big deal. And so we joined it this year, started up a team, and a ton of work went into it by Stephanie Beatty Hancock, um, and Marty Testo. Uh, the coaches are Terry Marrow and Phoebe Connolly. And there's a slew of student partners who are helping out. It's been, um, when I saw it in Springfield last year, I, I remarked that in my 20-plus years of being in public education, it was the same grace I had ever seen. And it's, and if you have a chance to see a game, the home ones are already over, but we'll see how, maybe we'll get a, maybe we'll get a nearby playoff game or something. I wrote on here that we have an all-in-four record, but we win every game. And, um, my, I'm gonna credit Marty with this. There was a question raised about other schools potentially having their playing times of the kids shifted with focus on winning the game. And while we are not doing that, we're focusing on equal time for all the athletes. It was remarked that someone was questioning this and Marty's response was, uh, we win every game. You look in the stands, you look at the faces of the kids, you look at the partners, and we win every game. There's a win every time we play, this team takes the floor. So I wanted to just pass that on. Um, it's, it's an incredible opportunity to watch some kids, um, just have a blast out there. And our, and what it does for the growth for our partners is incredible too. Anyways, just wanted you guys to know about that. So they did lose to Springfield today. Damn it. But, um, like I said, they still win. Um, so that is my report.
Thank you. I can tell, I can tell from personal experience, those games are really cool. As a ref, I've seen them.
Right.
And they are phenomenal.
Yep.
And the kids have, the kids have a blast. And there's, the, the one that I saw in Brattleboro, they, they told me it was better attended than basketball games.
We, I won't say our gym was full, but we had quite a few people there that were okay. The gates were set and the bleachers were lined. It's quite a crowd.
They're pretty cool.
And there was even a promposal at the end of one of them, so.
Aww.
Yep.
We never did that, our day.
Promposal?
When did that start?
I don't know.
I think it's, since, since the advent of everybody records every aspect of the, we didn't do that either.
The iPhone started the promposal.
Yeah, could be.
So, Bill, I've read your report in its entirety. Is there anything you want to highlight out of that?
No, I'll just add something that's not on there. We did hire a new Director of Special Education. Proud to say that it is an internal candidate from Leland and Gray. Um, Ms. Stephanie Beatty Hancock will be the new Director of Special Education as of July 1st, which creates the challenge of having to replace her here in the Intensive Needs Program. But luckily, she'll be in charge of that, so. We're working on that right now.
All right.
It is. Abby is retiring. Yes, after 31 years in this district. 31 years, so. It was a very, it was a really strong candidate pool and, um, with some really, really high-quality candidates. And we're lucky to end up where we did. Feel very, um, you can't replace Abby, but we're excited for, uh, what we're gonna be working on.
Congratulations. Good. All right. Act 46, um, there's very little to report there, other than, you know, the new mud board is meeting, but they haven't legally reconfigured yet because the vote isn't confirmed. And we do know that in the other side that failed with Dover, Wardsboro, and Marlboro. Bob, are you leaving? Okay, you would be our, because you would be our forum. That, there is a Wardsboro revote, May 1.
Yes. Information meeting on the 24th.
Okay, in Wardsboro. And I know, I think, isn't Dover, like, isn't the Dover committee, you know, rich in some of them working with Wardsboro just to, no?
They are completely,
They're completely out?
Sitting and watching.
Okay. Have you been to these meetings?
Oh, yes. I will say that Donna Russo Savage and Brad James came down to Wardsboro last week.
Answered all the questions.
Everything just kind, they were fantastic. They answered every single question extremely patiently, extreme in-depth, answered all the possibilities. They had created a 45-slide presentation specific to Wardsboro. It was outstanding.
Was that on community television?
It's not on television, but the, uh, slides are up on the WCSU website right on the homepage.
Okay, so we can look at the presentation and tape it. Okay. And that's about it with Act 4, that's about it with everything with Act 46, I think. We do not have bills and pay orders tonight. They, um, moving our meeting night, one night earlier, there was a problem with getting them done. So traditionally, when that's happened, um, one or two, two of us have gone and, you know, reviewed them and then we've just approved them at the next meeting so that we could get things signed. Um, it's often been officers, I certainly will volunteer because I'm really close. Is there somebody else who maybe next, who this week? Emily and Twilight. Like Wednesday, okay, cool. So like Wednesday afternoon, we'll go down to WCSU, look at the bills and pay orders, sign them off. And then at the next meeting, the board will just have to, um, we'll just have to kind of approve them that way.
So CSU?
Yes.
Okay.
Central office. Last, well, we have the consent agenda with our February 14th and our March 22nd, um, minutes.
What before that?
Wait, you skipped over policy.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, it was unintentional. Too many notes all over the agenda. Um, Policy Committee. When we reorganized, not everybody was here and essentially the Policy Committee is what? Now with people who've left, it's Twilight and was Ally on it?
Ally was on it before, but she wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know if she,
I thought we appointed her anyway. We did, I think.
I think we appointed her anyway.
We appointed her because she was on it before, so we just need another one.
But are there more people interested in being on the Policy Committee? Right now it's Twilight and Ally. We could use, we, we, there could be a third.
It can be.
Now, there's not a lot of work. Most of it's done.
I will be on it when the board meetings are not on Mondays.
If, if, there could be to five people on it.
Okay, well, in Policy Committee, it always mean on another night.
Oh, no. After session, maybe we move it to Tuesdays. Are they gonna be Mondays forever?
The decision was made to set our, our meeting.
There is great, there is, um, great consternation about that and, and it's been talked to,
So we'd have to do a motion.
I've been approached about moving it back to Tuesdays after session is over.
Tuesdays during session as well, I care of,
No, no, no. It, it makes sense to move it, but we're conflicting with Townsend and they're only meeting one night a week and we are on their night and we moved to their night.
They should be on their night.
Townsend is, Townsend would like us to move and perhaps if we moved after session, it would be okay.
It's not gonna be that long where we're gonna have all these,
I know, I know. It's a short-term problem. So maybe in a month or two, we can move our night, our nights back to Tuesday and, um,
But when we do it, we have to make a motion to do that because we set our nights.
Right. We don't have, well, I would even put it in the warning to, you know, change our meeting night back to Tuesday.
I think we should make sure we do it officially.
Right. See, there's more support for Tuesday.
Tuesdays were,
So anyway,
You know what?
Twilight, I think it's you and Ally and Kelly, but Kelly won't join the Policy Committee officially until after we move back to Tuesday nights.
I may join it officially, but I might be absent the first of guns.
Well, there's not a lot of policy right now anywhere, is there, Bill?
No, we're, because we're gonna be developing all the policies, you know.
The, the mud is gonna develop all new policies and there's actually a, a work group on there that's gonna be comparing existing policies across the entire mud with the model policies so that there will be one set of policies for everybody.
That's brilliant. It's about time.
Yeah.
Well, it's coming. It's coming.
That's gonna be the works, I mean.
So Policy Committee probably is not gonna be a whole episode. We may interact with them on some of the policies that we have that differ, but not a lot. Okay, so lastly, okay, now bills and pay orders, right?
We're not doing bills and pay orders.
I'm sorry, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda. Of 240 and 320.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We do not need the executive session for contracts. We only need the superintendent evaluation. And we could push that to May if we had, because we gotta get out of here. All right, any other business? One last motion? All right, all in favor, please leave.